And we will be going over Agenda Item 2A. City Council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code to conduct interviews and discuss and deliberate the appointment of Associate Judge. We are in executive session. I'm still ready to take a motion as a result of our executive session. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, Mayor, we are ready to make a motion. I move that we appoint Charles Carver and Boss Coy to serve as Associate Municipal Court Judges.
A second. I have a motion and a second. Counsel, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll please call the roll.
Counselmember Nelson?
Yes.
Counselmember Jones?
Yes.
Counselmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff? Counselmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel, for that unanimous vote, and congratulations to both Mr. Coy and Mr. Carver, and most importantly, congratulations to our municipal judge for the citizens to know she has been working six days a week, all the time, and normally seven, and when I say days, I mean days and nights. So, we are, our city is well-served by Judge Hines, but we thought she needed some help. So if you'd join me in a round of applause. So, thank you Judge Hines, and congratulations, gentlemen, and we're looking forward to you being good help to her. We appreciate you serving the city. With that, as authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We're now convening in regular session. It is 6:34, and we are extremely blessed to have a young lady from Bastrop Intermediate School. Her name is Minnie, and she is going to be leading us in both the Pledge to the United States and the Texas Pledge. So she can come forward now. She's a little bit nervous, but I assured her that you were very friendly people, so be nice to Miss Minnie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you very much. I hope you all have an enjoyable evening.
Thank you, Minnie. You did a great job. Minnie made a gift to me tonight. I have never seen Mayor Schrader in Braille. She gave me a copy of the Pledge of the United States in Braille, which you will see framed in my office soon, and a very, very sweet note. So, really appreciate Minnie helping us out this evening. If you will remain standing, Ben Hitsfeld will be leading us in our invocation tonight.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for your grace, we thank you for your love, we thank you for this life, and for this opportunity that we have as citizens of the greatest city in the state of Texas and in the United States to live here in Bastrop. We thank you for our mayor, and our counsel, and our city manager, and all of the staff who make everything work as it does, for all the planning that has been going on through the months, and we just ask your blessings upon every effort that is upon those here at City Hall, and every citizen here in Bastrop who does their duty to reach out to their fellow neighbors, to be kind to one another, and to make this the best place possible. We pray for your wisdom to be upon all who make decisions, and your blessings upon us as Bastropians. We pray these things in the mighty and gracious name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Pastor Hitsfeld's back from the reserves, and they don't like his beard as much as he does, I think is part of the problem there. Thank you very much, Ben, appreciate it. And Minnie is free to go. She's welcome to stay, but she does not, it's gonna get boring for her really quick, so it's completely up to y'all. We have a joint resolution of the County of Bastrop and the City of Council for our Veterans Day, the entire event's coming up on the 10th and the 11th. And I am going to read the resolu-- I was making sure, I thought you guys were presenting, but I will read the resolution, and then you guys will have an opportunity to make a presentation. Whereas the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County Commissioners' Court come together on Veterans Day to pay tribute to the men and women who serve our great nation with distinction in the United States Armed Services, both in peacetime and in war. And whereas on Veterans Day, Americans across this land thank our veterans for their service in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard, whether active duty, Reserve, or National Guard. And whereas on Veterans Day, our community expresses a continuing sense of gratitude to those who give so much in the defense of the freedoms which we all enjoy. And whereas at this time of special recognition, local veterans organizations, along with the Bastrop Area Cruisers, pay tribute to our veterans by hosting the Veterans Day Classic Car Show. Furthermore, the Red, White, and Blue Veterans of Bastrop County Organization will be hosting a banquet to honor our veterans. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bastrop County Commissioners' Court and the Bastrop City Council hereby encourage all citizens to join in the celebration of Veterans Day in the year of 2017. So this, I've signed this, Judge Poppy signed this, and we will read that as a part of our events, and I am now on Item 6B, and I think you guys are gonna make a presentation. Ms. O'Brien?
Mayor, Counsel, I think we're like schoolteachers. We're not supposed to have favorite groups or organizations that we work with, but I do. And the Bastrop Area Cruisers is one of those, and so we just wanted to take a few moments tonight to brag on them publicly. And they work tirelessly year-round to produce this event. It's an all-volunteer army, and we've got three fine gentlemen here, but I can tell you their wives work just as hard behind the scenes. They start planning in March of every year, and are very self-sufficient. They have done this a time or two, they know what they're doing. This event has a huge economic impact on the downtown district and Bastrop as a whole. They work closely with local hoteliers, with sponsors, and basically everyone in the community. And they do it all with zero hotel occupancy tax. So I just wanted to take a minute to brag. One new thing that we've got this year, and I don't wanna steal Visit Bastrop's thunder-- I know, I need glasses. But Visit Bastrop has stepped up to the plate to help promote the car show this year. And Dale and his staff, Ashton and Shane are in the audience, wave. They will give a full update on the report, on their marketing, and two council meetings from now, but I just wanted to give a quick little sneak peek. It's really complicated doing this. Okay. Anyways, and I tested the sound over here, but not on this machine, so we'll have-- yeah, I need help. We tested the sound in the room, so I apologize. The projector died on us about 10 minutes before you guys came back in the room, so we're struggling. And I can actually play it everywhere. That's probably easier. We don't need the screen. All right, so this is just a sample of some of the marketing that Visit Bastrop is doing for the car show.
Does your Veterans Day sound like this? Or like this?
Well, you get the point. You need to turn into Pandora Radio for more. I apologize, this was supposed to be a wonderful presentation, bragging on them, and technical difficulties got in the way, but I do wanna ask Bill, and Tony, and Bruce, who have been working very hard this year to stand up and be recognized. These are the three co-chairs of the event. And I don't know, gentlemen, if you wanna say a few words? Thank you.
I guess on behalf of the Bastrop Area Cruisers, we thank you for the attention and proclamation. We do work hard at it. We have about 160 members of our clubs, including the wives and spouses and everybody else. And we wanna really thank the City of Bastrop, Sarah, for the downtown Bastrop. She's been tremendous help to us in helping promote the show, host the event, not only the car show, but obviously the veteran ceremony is probably the most important part of the event. Visit Bastrop has done a tremendous job in helping us promote the thing. We actually have about 140 cars already registered for this event, which is probably, at this time last year, we probably had 80 or 85 cars registered, or vehicles registered, because some are trucks. And also the police department that work with us, the public works department, just everybody in the city is so helpful, and obviously all of the businesses, because we have a tremendous amount of sponsorships, and we donated quite a bit of money last year from the proceeds from this event to probably seven or eight different veterans organizations, and many other, you know, community organizations, like the Food Pantry, and just, you know, on and on, probably about 12 or 15 altogether. So, we enjoy it. We enjoy showing off Bastrop, and then we enjoy having the visitors come, because we have people that come from Houston, San Antonio, we even have some from West Texas, St. Angelo. We have quite a few people that come in for this from a distance, so it does help the tourism. And many people say, hey, I didn't know Bastrop was this great, so I'm coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Just appreciate your organization so very much for not only the work that you do on the car show, but for the service that you did for our country as well.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I please--
Please.
--just to show the people in the house, how many veterans do we have out there? All the veterans, please stand, if you don't mind. Army strong.
I was having to move on, because I'm getting choked up. My son's in the Navy, and really proud of him. Okay, we're on the mayor's report. We are going to be changing subjects considerably. My minute with the mayor this evening, we're gonna talk about chickens. We're gonna talk about it on Wednesday, November 29th, at 6:30. If you have an opinion about chickens, please wait till Wednesday, November 29th, at 6:30. There is going to be a one hour and 15 minutes. I think things are fantastic, don't change anything, and there is going to be an hour and 15 minutes of, are you kidding me? And we need to change some things. You will be able, as a citizen, to sign up for a five-minute slot. You can yield your time to your best friend if you wanna come up with a solution. We are really not looking for a list of complaints, we're looking for a list of solutions and suggestions and things that you can live with. As your counsel, we are elected to represent and serve the community, all of the community, and to make decisions that represent what the community truly wants. So, there will be, I'm sure if it's not on the city calendar already, it will be soon. I know it's on counsel's calendar. There will be postcards going out if you're in the ordinance-protected area, or if you're in the area, apparently the chickens don't read the ordinance, and so they have gone to a larger area. If you are impacted by the chickens, you will be invited to the meeting. We will do as much publicity about it as we possibly can. Counsel will have the opportunity to hear all points of view, and by the end of the meeting, we will give the city manager direction for an ordinance, we will decide to have another meeting, we will do what councils do when they've been given information to make a decision.
Mayor, may I interrupt for a second?
Please.
You forgot to mention that we're opening the evening with the chicken dance.
Led by the Mayor Protem, apparently. So, my mayor's report is attached and is a part of the packet, if you are so inclined to see what I have been doing or what I will be doing. If you look at my mayor's report, you'll see two pictures from the National Night Out. Unfortunately, Mayor Protem Schiff was a little under the weather and was not able to join us, but you'll see in the picture that the city manager, myself, and all of the other counsel were all participated that night, and went to, we all made all the parties, and we're hoping that it's a real kickoff, and that next year we'll have more parties to go to, and it was just really a great evening, and I think some of my other council members, some of the other folks on the dais may have some additional things to say, but it was just truly an enjoyable evening, and I'd like to thank Officer McIntyre for all of the hard work that she did in pulling that together. I've been to a couple ribbon cuttings, was at a Bastrop Chamber After Hours event, did several things, but I wanted to share a special thank you, and have, I have a request for help, because I know this community can come together and help us out when we need to. Those of you who were not at the Delgado Park, the Mina Ward dedication, you really missed out. And fortunately, if you weren't able to make it, the video has been playing on the city station, so you have an opportunity to view that. I had an opportunity to meet and visit with Minerva Delgado Lopez. She's just the most awesome woman in the whole wide world, and her speech was just fantastic. On October 2nd, she wrote a thank you note, and because she can still write in the secret writing of cursive, I am going to read it to you. "City of Bastrop, words cannot adequately express my deepest appreciation for the recognition and honor given to me on September 23rd, 2017. I was nervous and apprehensive about what to expect, but when I saw the event organization, listened to the speakers and presenters, I was overwhelmed. Everything exceeded my wildest dreams. Never did I expect such an honor. I am so grateful for this recognition and lifelong memory. This will be, this will all be passed down to future generations. The plaque and park will always be a reminder to all that dreams really do come true." If you were at the event, and you heard her speech, she talked about Harold and the Purple Crayon, and the sweet lady sent me a copy of the book, and she wrote on the inside, but it's to me, it's not to you guys, so. Just a fantastic lady, and it was just such a pleasure to get to know her, and really a great event. So now my call for help. Mina Elementary is having a College Days event, and it's going to be on November 8th. They are trying to make sure that every child in that elementary school has a college t-shirt that they can wear, and we're trying to plant the seed that college is an opportunity and an option for everyone. If any of you, and I am not looking left or right, if any of you perhaps have an old college t-shirt that maybe doesn't fit like it used to, that you would like to donate to the elementary school, or if you have a particular color that you would like to see well-represented on November 8th, I would encourage you, you can make a financial donation to the Assistant Principal Emily Allen, or you can drop off t-shirts, but I'm sure they would appreciate having those next week. But the event is on November 8th, but if you can drop off, I know I myself have several shirts that I could probably share with them. After I turned in my mayor's report, I still had a few things to do before council meeting tonight. One of them was early voting, started yesterday, so there is an election on November 7th. If you haven't already early voted, I would encourage you to do so. And last Friday, Counselmember Jones asked my husband and I if we'd like to work in the concession stand. To my shock, my husband readily agreed, and if you had popcorn, and you sat on the Bastrop side at the homecoming game, my husband made your popcorn, and my grandson said it was the best popcorn in the whole wide world. So he made 2,000 bags of popcorn, and I was gonna calculate how many things of tea I was involved with, but it was a lot. It was a long evening. We got there about 6:30, and I think we were done around 11:30, but it was really a great event, and I really appreciate Counselmember Jones inviting us. On Saturday, I was at Los Pines Toyota, I know Counselmember Nelson was there as well, Lori's Pickup and the Big Pink Bus, some of you may have seen the bus if you were driving through town, and the Liriano Foundation and the things that they've done to support breast cancer is just really appreciated within our community. Tomorrow, I retired from a company called Motorola, that when I retired was called Freescale, and has since been bought out by NXP. Some of you have fallen asleep, and some of you know exactly what I'm talking about, but I have been invited to speak to a group of STEM students tomorrow, so I'll be going to Austin to do that. We've got the Paint the Pines Purple event coming up at the Convention Center on Saturday, and I have done this for the new families in my neighborhood. I would encourage all of you. I live on a street that is really not safe to trick-or-treat on, and that's why the City of Bastrop has our Trick or Treat Trail. And I love this event, because it's the city working with Parks and Rec, then the library, and the YMCA, and Main Street, and the Bastrop Ministerial Alliance, and it gives all of our families a safe place to trick-or-treat with their kids from 5 to 8, because it's a school night, so everything about that works out. So if you've got some new families in your neighborhood, they may not know about this event, and I would encourage you to please share that with them. Before we have our next council meeting, we will have our first annual Boards and Commission Appreciation Banquet on November 9th. If you're on a board, or you've been on a board recently, you should have gotten your invitation. And Mayor Protem Schiff, and particularly Counselmember Nelson, let me know that the Astros will start at 7:00 PM regardless of what's going on in chambers, so I'm not wanting to go on forever and ever, although they think I already have. But just this morning, I was invited by K-Vet to be a part of the morning show on Friday, November 10th, to kick off the Veterans Weekend. So I'll be there for the, the Junior ROTC's gonna be doing the posting of the colors, and do the National Anthem and the pledges, and then I'll be on the radio on K-Vet. So with that, that's all I have for my mayor's report. Counselmember Jones?
I just wanted to again thank Bill Ennis, he's the one that was appointed by the mayor to oversee that event for Mina, and he did, it exceeded everybody's expectation. I was so proud, and I just wanna thank you again. You did a great job. And as far as the neighborhood night out that we did, that was brilliant. It was just an opportunity for the council to ride along with the police, to go out into the community, to meet people, and I'll tell you what, it was something else to get to look people in the face that maybe in the past really thought that they didn't have a voice, or anybody that cared, and you know, one of the things that the police did as a response to that was just walk and hand people their personal cards, so that in neighborhoods, people felt like that they had somebody to call. You know, we don't know if we have a problem if people don't feel safe, or don't feel like they can report it, and that really bridged gap. I was pretty honored to be part of that, and I just wanna thank our city manager for setting that up, and then our police for, I mean, they just, they worked overtime on that, put us all in cars, and took really good care of us, and organized and coordinated, and it was, it was just really, just an outstanding community outreach.
Great, thank you. Counselmember Ennis?
I'd just like to second Counselwoman Jones's comments about the National Night Out. It was a wonderful experience for all of us. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
I have nothing.
Counselmember Nelson?
Yeah, I'm gonna echo Counselmember Ennis and Counselmember Jones's thoughts on National Night Out. I really appreciate the work that our PD does toward community relations, and I wanna give a special thanks to Sergeant Nagy for being my tour guide, as well as letting me ride the front seat this time. I really appreciate that. On Thursday, the 19th, I attended the public meeting at the Bastrop State Park, spirited debate, along with some great information about potential park improvements. My takeaway from this is that it's an example of the collaborative and coordinated discussions and actions that benefit our collective community, so it was really heartening to attend that. And then on Saturday, this past Saturday, I did attend Lori's Pickup's in Pink, an event to spread information on women's health. It was more than just corporate sponsorship. It's about a family committing time and resources to help hundreds of women get tested, in some cases treated, for breast cancer, free of charge. My thanks to the Liriano family and their cadre of volunteers who were setting all this up, so that's it for me.
And Counselmember Nelson looked wonderful in his pink shirt. Counselmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor, all I have is, we thoroughly enjoyed National Night Out, but we gotta give a shout-out to McGruff. Nobody's mentioned McGruff. McGruff was right on top, right on top of everything. Thanks.
Thank you guys so much. I just, I enjoy working with each and every one of you, I really appreciate it. City Manager?
Excuse me, Mayor. No, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to say one more thing, because I am looking at some people out here that are on the Arts Board, and I had a nine-year-old little girl come into town, and she got to do that scavenger hunt with the frogs. Oh my gosh. She said it was like the most fun, and the person that took her said it was the most fun thing they had ever done, and I just wanna thank you for that. The way that it was set up, it was just so exciting. I had the whole thing explained to me, and we just need to see about, if there's a way we can let people, maybe more people know, but thank you. I think they do that through the museum, don't they? And thank you. I mean, they just went on and on about the way you handled it, the way it was set up, everything, so thank y'all very much for that.
Great, thank you, Counselmember Jones. Those toads in town are a lot of fun. You don't have to be a little kid to appreciate them. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am, I wanna wish my sweet, sexy biker man who's on the road a happy anniversary today.
And he sent her some lovely, lovely flowers, so, happy anniversary. All right, we are on 6F, a proclamation for the city council recognizing November 3rd as the City of Bastrop Arbor Day, whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the world in many languages and cultures, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, providing us with paper and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees provide environmental benefits by providing shade for people in our buildings, removing air pollution, abating stormwater runoff, and providing wildlife habitat, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our parks and streets, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and enjoyment, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Connie Schrader, do hereby proclaim November 3rd, 2017, as Arbor Day in the City of Bastrop, and I do hereby encourage all citizens to cherish our trees and recognize the important role in the environment. I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Bastrop to be affixed this 24th day of October, 2017, and I would like a round of applause for our Parks Department and our Parks Board. If you're following along, we're now on Item 7. We don't have any work session or briefings tonight, so we are to Staff Reports, 8A. Receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending September 30th. Ms. Waldron?
This is a challenge. Good evening. All right. Yep. Slow going. If that's not mine. This is mine, these two.
For those of you at home, you need not send us comments that you're not able to see it like you normally do. We know we're having problems with that, but we, everybody's doing the very, very best I can tonight.
Good evening. I do have the monthly financial report for the year ending September 30th, 2017. I added the word preliminary, because it is preliminary, there will be changes during the audit period-- during the audit period, and the comprehensive annual financial report will have the final numbers. But I wanted to go ahead and go over the major funds. We ended up the year very strong. In most of the major funds, we, we were actually, we exceeded budget, and the Hotel Motel Fund is the only one that we didn't exceed 100% of budget.
Please clarify that that's revenue when you say we exceed a budget?
Yes, yes. Revenue, budget. As far as the expense side, we were actually below our budget, yes. So we ended up very strong. I wanted to point out on the revenues, this is general fund total revenue. We were 10% increase over fiscal '16, and the expenses were 9% less this year than fiscal '16. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I would just make a comment for the public who maybe can't see this, that last year, as I look at it, it looks like we took in about $1 million more than our budget, and we spent about $1 million less than our, than what we budgeted. I'd say that was very good. Good job.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Schiff, and for those of you here in the audience or at home, either one, I would encourage you that all of the charts that she's trying to show are a part of the packet, so if you're wanting to zoom in and check out numbers, you have the ability to do that. I would also like to bring your attention to the fact that the vast majority of the general fund revenue is sales tax, so the extra, majority of the extra money came from folks coming and shopping and, and the sales tax that's generated within our city limits.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to compliment the city manager and Ms. Waldron and all the staff for keeping the line on expenditures and having us in such good shape.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. So I think what we're saying, Dennis, our expectation is that they always bring in more revenue and always come under expenses. Is that what we're, yeah?
That's normally the way that's supposed to work.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Waldron, so much. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? You guys do a great job, and thank you, City Manager. We're now going to have a presentation from Bastrop Visitor Center. This is required as a part of their annual report. Please come forward.
Good evening. I have some handouts. I don't know if I can come towards you or not, so, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Decided to go against the PowerPoint, per se, and just go with the slides and hope for no technical difficulties. This presentation will go over the accomplishments and the activities for this last year for the visitor center, and then we'll look at, quickly look at the budget and the goals for next year, okay? So I don't want to necessarily read every line in interest of time, but I did want to point out some things and accomplishments. We had strong volunteers this year with visitor center hours over 1,500, and the research library over 850. We had one new permanent exhibit completed, and we will have two more by the end of this, this calendar year. We had five temporary exhibits, nearly 600 archives, hosted over a dozen tours, and then the, the numbers there for greeting customer, greeting visitors, and those that spent the night. In addition, we had some advertising that we did. One in particular I'd like to mention was with the Visit Bastrop DMO Group, where we partnered with them for the full-page ad. So that was really fun for the Veterans Day Car Show. Those are just some activities that we did. The pictures there, the bottom slide or the bottom panel is the numbers that we calculate, or we, we actually gather data every day when visitors come into the visitor center, and this is the information that we collect. And I've talked with Dale, and we, we might, in some, sometime in the near future, add to it or take away, or whatever other things we might want to collect. It's a little bit of cut and paste, because we're on the calendar year, and y'all are October from last, so I had to, I had to add in 2016 numbers there, but then you can see the totals at the bottom. For 2018, this, this would be the income by source, the different, you can see admissions, donations. We have a strong membership program that just launched, actually, the beginning of the month. Our Rendezvous in Homes Tour, the Hot Funds for both visitor center and the, and BCH, the museum. Tours and tours, don't have any grants yet, but hope to. The gift shop in the library and the water sales. The expenses in the next column, you can read them there with the totals at the bottom. The next page are financial goals. I want to point out the second one. In this particular budget that I submitted as a draft, I included, mid-year, we had some significant changes that resulted in significant reduction in payroll for us, and so there'll be, I did a true-up report, and there'll be some reimbursement back to the city, but in, along those lines, staying within the same budget, I've added in a volunteer coordinator position that would work directly with Visit Bastrop to act as the liaison between the two of us and ensure that our volunteer program is strong and robust and does what the docents, what we want tours to do, docents to do, for, for everybody. So I, I just wanted to make sure you guys saw that. And then on the goals below, plan to do some collaboration. We've already started, well, in contact with Megan Brandon over at the Colorado River Collegiate Academy. We want to work with the ninth, ninth graders there and the fourth graders probably at Mina to start a junior historian program, which we're really excited about. We're going to have the ninth graders actually do the research and provide some proposals to our board, and then we'll choose one that will work best for us. Also started working with Lost Pines Art Center and Parks and Rec, and we're doing something called Experience Bastrop, which will be monthly activities on Saturdays, which will include the three of us, to bring families out and hopefully families, family visitors and those sorts of things. So, let's see if there's anything else. Those two things have already started. Let's see. Oh, the Oral History Program. We're really excited to bring that back, and also I put into the budget, which y'all graciously approved, some equipment that we can travel with, so many of the residents can't actually get out, and, you know, Smithville has a strong program, but you do have to go to them. So this particular equipment would allow for us to go into their homes and be able to record stories that we might not otherwise get. So we also want to do that next year. I don't know if you have any questions. We're really excited with all the changes that are happening and the opportunity to work with Visit Bastrop and all, everybody, it's just, the buzz is really exciting, so. I do have a true-up report that I was going to give Tracy, but I also have copies if everybody wanted one. I'm not sure how this works. It's my first time, so you guys tell me.
We pretty much let Ms. Waldron take care of the numbers.
That sounds good. Did you want to see the article, the ads, or? No? Okay. Any, any questions?
Okay, what we'll do is ask Tracy to scan all of that in, and we'll do it as an attachment to other information we send out to council to make sure they get it and review it.
Okay.
Appreciate the information, and having it, folks often want to know, okay, you've given somebody hot funds, what, what happened with them, what'd they do with them, what's going on?
Right.
And it's really, I, I know it's a contractual obligation, but I really appreciate you putting this together. Are there any comments from the, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, real quick. I, I had the occasion to take three of my grandkids, 16, 11, and six, to the museum, and I held their attention for 45 minutes.
Wow.
And it was outstanding. They all came away happy. That was a lot better than what I thought it was going to be, so.
Well, I have to thank Robbie Sanders and my, my board. We have lots of people that work and help out, so appreciate the comments.
Well, I appreciate y'all's hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I am very interested in what you have in your folder, but Tracy will get that to us. Thank you for bringing it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm now going on to item 8C, receive presentation on the quarterly investment report for the period ending September 30th, 2017.
Hello again. So this is the quarterly investment report, and it is the final one for the fiscal year 2017. We ended our year with $24,892,631 in book value. These are all funds. You'll notice that we were at 28.5 at the end of June. We did have bond payments due between June and September, so that is why the balance has been lowered. And we earned $255,749 in the fiscal year in interest, which is much more than we did last year. We're getting a, a much better interest rate these days.
Great. Any questions from Ms. Waldron? Seeing none? Is there other items you're wanting? Because I know you gave us the backup.
Right. There's detail in the package, but this is just the summary.
It's included in the package for people who like to look at that sort of stuff if you're at home and want to know all the details. Anything else?
That's it.
Great job. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Now we will receive a presentation from the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, and Sean promised to give us an update on the game. Have they even started?
They have. First pitch, George Springer struck out.
Okay.
So Mayor, Council, City Manager, community, thank you for having me. This is an update from the EDC today, and, okay, we're going to use the mouse. Ah ha. Okay. So, since the last time I saw y'all, the International Economic Development Council, their Economic Excellence Awards for 2017, EDC received the Human Capital Award for Population Less Than 25,000, a Silver winner for the Bastrop Youth Career Day for our multi-year, for a three-year program that we've been running, and so that is an international recognition of that program. The award ceremony was held in Toronto, and so we were not able to go up there and collect the award. We are still waiting for it in the mail, but we're, as soon as we have that, we will gladly put it on our wall and show it off to the community as, as an achievement of the EDC. At our last board meeting, our retail consultant, the Retail Coach, gave an overview and our, the strategy that the EDC is using with the board. That is recorded in our, our meeting, so if you're interested in their full presentation, feel free to go and fast-forward to that part of, of the meeting. I do want to go through some details that are relevant to the council and some forecasting that we do internally related to our retail sales, retail trade area, and, and give a glimmer of hope at the end of it that even though some of it is, is a little fearful of what's going on in, in our marketplace, there, there's, there's a silver lining on the horizon out there. So our retail trade area, we look at a couple of different methodologies, but primarily now we use a cell phone analysis. If you send or receive phone calls, you log on to your phone while you're out shopping. It, it pings a system and that, that goes back into the system, and we know back where that phone home base is overnight, and from that, we can track our shoppers in our shopping districts in given periods of time and go, where are they coming from? And so we have fairly reliable data that is collected through third-party sources that create this area. As you notice, on the, on the western side, it goes all the way to, to 130, goes all the way to I-10 down in the south, as far north as Lexington, and so we have a lot of folks that come into our trade area to shop, and we've traditionally been the shopping hub for the southeast submarket of, of the Austin metro. When you leave the airport and head east on 71, the next place to shop is Bastrop until you get to I-10 at Columbus. And even those folks at Columbus get to make a choice. If they can't buy goods in Columbus, they're either going to Katy, they're going to San Antonio, or they're coming back to Bastrop. Looking at our basic straight demographic profile of our trade area, our retail trade area population has increased to about 193,000 folks that live in that big yellow circle. Household income has gone up to, average household income's now a little over 72,000. Median income within the trade area is at 56. We're showing growth in, in all of these within the trade area, and we actually tracked these back to 2013, and you can see that since 13, we've gone from 153,000 in our trade area to about 193,000, with some very little variation in, in what's happened in the trade area, because there hasn't been a lot of retail growth outside of, of the Bastrop core here. And you see that the average household income growth, as well as our average age and median age is fairly stable with, within the trade area. So back in 15, I did a presentation to the EDC Board, and I want to go through some of the new factors that came out of that presentation, looking at, at our retail trade area. We track other retail developments within the region, and we do that because we know that they're going to be a competitive nature, and back in 15, we said 24, 36 months out, we're going to face some competition out there. The, the big competition, we'll actually show you their site plan, is at 130 and 71 on the southwest corner. That site plan has cleared the City of Austin Planning Department, and at any moment, they could start turning dirt on that development. On the southeast corner at 71 and 130, that site has recently sold and closed, and we don't have a whole lot of intelligence yet on that site, but we, we are digging into it as fast as we can to figure out what's the intended purpose and use for that site. We're also tracking some new retail developments that are in the planning stages in Elgin within our own county, and so we've got some competition that is going to, on the western side of our trade area, that at some point, there's going to be other choices than just retail shopping in Bastrop, Texas. This is Velocity Crossing at 71 and 130. The site plan, from what the developer told me three weeks ago, has cleared the City of Austin. The big, the big anchor here is going to be an HEB plus grocery store, so our workforce that goes into Austin on their way home, now are going to have an option to stop before they, they get to their house on the western side of our community. You can see a large footprint of retail that's going to be going next to that. What's driving this in that region are several large residential development. Easton Park on 183 South at the airport, Whisper Valley on 973 to the north of the airport. RSI Communities has another development there on 973, and then Lennar is building Sunchase on the southeast corner. I don't actually know what that road is. I'll have to look it up. And so we're also tracking within the next 36, 60 months, some rumors of some other retail developments within the trade areas that, that will be competitive to us. We're all aware of what's happening in Smithville and seeing the developments coming online in Smithville and being planned down there. We're hearing some in LaGrange as well, some expansion of programs down there. Even though Columbus is not within our trade area, there, there's potentially a project coming online in, in the next 36, 60 months in Columbus that can pull some of that southern and southeast trade area demographics down there, and then Lockhart being off of 130, with the residential growth out there has, has some proximity. The silver lining to that is, is we, we as a community, over the last 24 months, 30 months, have really made a commitment to tourism growth, which helps stabilize sales tax dollars, as well as rooftop growth, which is the traditional driver of sales tax dollars in a community. And so I think we've got programs and things in place that are moving forward, that even as the square miles in our retail trade area may get smaller, we'll get some density within that and get some tourism, bringing in some discretionary disposable income to offset what has traditionally been a larger retail trade area. And, and our consultant will tell you that we have one of the largest retail trade areas in the state of Texas that they work in, in square miles and reach, and it's just our proximity related to other communities that don't have similar retail within them. So I want to give a quick update on our community development and infrastructure projects that are budgeted for the current year. The downtown trail expansion, Wesley and I will be meeting with Tech Dot later this week with our engineer to go over the, the plan review for that. That plan set is at 90%, and we hope to be able to start getting, working through the process. We'll text out to get the Tech Dot right-of-way plans approved and, and moving on that path, so sometime hopefully after the first of the year, we'll have a, a bid award and be able to, to start construction on the downtown trail. Technology MLK Project is one that the board recently approved at the last meeting. The engineering's released, the surveying's ongoing. The next step on this project is a 60% plan review. The board did add to this project, the drainage structure- The board did add to this project the drainage structure in there. We have some remaining 2013 Certificate of Obligation Bond Funds that were remaining from the JamCo, the southern part of Technology Drive, that gave us some additional dollars without using existing revenues or existing fund balance. And so, we've gone ahead and added in the drainage piece for the regional drainage for that, and our impact against revenues and fund balance is going to be greatly decreased because we have that money available to us. The other project that we want to make sure that y'all are aware of as it comes to the board and to the council, hopefully within the next month, is the Agnes Street Extension that we've been working on. That's Taco Cabana up there in the top-left corner. Right now, this is a budgeted project, but it does not have board and council approval yet. We've got to go through that. This is a City of Bastrop Transportation Plan Project. It's project number 26. If you're into the transportation plan, it's number nine out of 34. It is the first part of what would be an east-west, non-71 route west of the Colorado River. And yes, the city manager, myself, the planning department, everybody involved is working on the middle section of Agnes and trying to figure out how to get that done. Hopefully, yes, ma'am.
I do want to point out, as he talks about this, that this is one of the priorities that y'all set at your council retreat, and that is providing accessibility north and south of Highway 71 and the service roads. So, this is something that we're very excited that the BDC board is going to contribute. Not only is it going to open up development, as he talks about, but it is also going to meet one of your significant priorities to us relative to accessibility.
Yeah, this is not a transportation project from the EDC perspective, but it is from the city perspective for sure. For us, it's new and expanded business enterprise, and it opens up some commercially-zoned property and provides that transportation corridor through there to make it work. The section of streets you see on there now is actually what we refer to as a super four, our four-lane divided street. The project will include building two of those lanes, which will both be east-westbound. At a later date, as that develops out, either the developer or the city or the EDC will come in and build the other two lanes as the need arises, as there's additional development in there. And so, we're making a public investment in advance of private investment, and we think this is a pretty safe bet that there will be private investment that will follow this, and we will see as a community, good return on our investment by doing this. It's one of the things that an EDC is capable of doing, and we're very appreciative of all of the city support and staff that we've gotten to help us get this project moving. The other project that we are working on is 921 Main Street. The board has agreed to enter into a letter of intent with Stone Cobalt Development, which is a joint venture between Stone Development and Cobalt Development. We currently are, they are currently with the letter of intent, looking at pre-leasing or getting letters of intent from interested parties that would want to be tenants in the building. And we will start contract negotiations and actually coming up with what the performance agreement looks like for getting this project. There's a lot of questions about what our investment in this looks like. It really is going to look very, it's very conservative on our part in what we're investing to get back. You're looking at a land grant. We're going to put the land into the deal. We're looking at the remediation costs, which we would be liable for anyway, which is the $93,000. And they've asked for $30,000 in additional site cost money to correct some other opportunities on the site. Within probably the next week, you will see a pre-leasing brochure coming out. Bob Springer at Reoc Partners in Austin is going to be representing them. And you'll see a 4,500-foot retail restaurant for the first floor. You'll see 4,500 square feet of office on the second floor, going to the public to look at getting letters of intent for potential tenants for the building. But the letter of intent clearly defines that this is the extent of the EDC's commitment to the project, and so, we're very pleased that, you know, we're going to get a new $2 million building at some point on the tax rolls with hopefully a retail restaurant downstairs generating sales tax. And if the market is favorable to us, like we suspect, that we will have the opportunity to attract an office tenant for the second floor that will bring somewhere in the range of 12 to 20 new jobs to Bastrop. We do have a fallback plan if that doesn't work out, but for the moment, we are going to put the office space out to the public, and if somebody is interested in it, it is available. And I believe that is all for me.
Do you have any kind of idea about what the rates are? Is that anything that they've talked about?
They will be competitive to the market rates that we see here in Bastrop for other commercial properties, probably to the middle point of where they're at for new space. And that's what folks have to remember about this. This is going to be brand-new space built specifically for those uses. There is going to be a tenant interior finish-out allowance included in that to help finish it out for the tenant. They're proposing an initial shell and then building it out for whether the retailer or restaurant, as well as for the upstairs. And so, the rates will be reflective of that. I have some idea what they're going to be, but I don't think they've actually set what their street rates are going to be and their ask is going to be. I have a good idea of what their take could be, but that's for them to negotiate on those private transaction side of it. So, and I'll be more than happy to visit with you offline about it. I don't want to speak for them.
We got that.
Okay.
And we're glad that you didn't. It's not appropriate, and I think we're fine with that. Councilmember Ennis, did you have a question? Anyone else? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I have one quick question for Sean. You guys are planning on getting some traffic coming out of Industrial Park, coming on South MLK?
So, part of that project, it provides the second ingress and egress route into the park, which complies with the City of Bastrop Development Regulations. But also, what that does, especially with like the 911 Communication Center in there, it's going to provide an off-71 route in and out of downtown. And so, we've got some fairly large employers, about 150 folks that work in the park now. They're now going to be, once that's complete, they'll be able to drive downtown for lunch and never get out onto 71 into the traffic. And so, I think that we're going to, it's going to be a benefit to the park, but it's also going to be a benefit to the 911 center and be a benefit to the sheriff's office up there that'll now be able to take prisoners when they're going downtown through, without going down 71, so.
Yeah, well, my only concern with that is the South MLK is awful narrow, and it's hard for the two-way traffic to get through there sometimes.
That is correct. It is on the city's transportation plan that that section of MLK needs to, something needs to be done with it, as well as the section that goes behind Walgreens as well. And when funding's available, I think the city and the EDC will look at what we can do to improve that transportation corridor through there. I don't know what it is exactly on the transportation plan. Ranking, right off the top of my head, there's 34 projects, but that is one of the projects in the transportation plan, is that section of MLK.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Ennis.
You probably said this, Mr. Kirkpatrick, but what is the completion, estimated completion time on that look-like-monster development there at 130 and 71?
So, once the site plan clears the City of Austin, that means they can start moving dirt. They probably, I don't know what the status of the building plans are, but some of that is a funded project. I would suspect that within the next 12, 24 months, that's an A-store, it'll move fairly quickly. And even with the rollback in projects, the number of projects that are going to be started, that project's going to move fairly quickly. I talk about this publicly, and I think I've told, used this here, when you look at the 71 corridor, our HEB in the 71 corridor, the next closest HEB to Bastrop is Riverside Drive or 7th Street. And so, under the USDA study that the City of Austin did, that 71-130 corridor is a food desert and has been a high priority for Mayor Adler and the City of Austin to get a grocery store in that vicinity there to be able to service not only the existing residents, but the new development that's occurring in that part of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. If you're following along, we're now at Citizen Comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for Citizen Comments?
No, ma'am.
All right. So, now, we're to the consent agenda. Council, do you have, does anyone have a wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wants to pull something from consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Consider action, item 10A, consider action to approve minutes from the October 10, 2017 meeting. Item 10B, consider action to approve the second reading of resolution number R-2017-79 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an agreement for the provision of Main Street Program Support between the City of Bastrop and the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Item 10C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2017-24 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, changing the names of three roads in Tahitian Village due to emergency response concerns, being Highway Court to Ori Court, Cocoa Lane to Noni Lane, and Laye Court to Riva Court, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, providing a severability clause establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
I move that we approve all items on the consent agenda.
I have a motion. I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Schiff and a second from Councilmember Ennis to approve the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. We're now at items for individual consideration. We're at item 11A. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2017-27 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial amusement use for Lot 2 of Hunter's Crossing Subdivision, Section 2A, located at 201 Hunter's Crossing Boulevard Suite 14, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, providing a severability clause, setting out conditions, and establishing an effective date. Hi.
Good evening. So, what this request is for is a conditional use permit. The Hunter's Crossing Plan Development zoning document required this use to get a conditional use permit to go into any sections in the Hunter's Crossing development. The base district for this area is C1, and in our standard zoning code, our C1 commercial district would have allowed this use by right. It's the planning, the plan development that made this requirement. What the applicant is requesting is to put a 2,200-square-foot indoor play facility for children in this, in that shopping center at 201 Hunter's Crossing Boulevard in one of the suites. The base zoning district is the planning and development, and the future land use is general commercial in that area. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this at their October 19 special meeting, and they voted seven to zero to approve or to recommend approval of the conditional use permit. They had a couple of questions regarding parking availability in that location and what the actual play equipment would be, which is indoor, kind of soft-sided play equipment for kids 12 and under. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, do you have any questions? I know the applicant's here as well. If you have any questions for the applicant, any questions?
Madam Mayor, move to approve the second reading of the ordinance 2017-27?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Nelson, a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Council. I see smiles from the applicant. Welcome to Bastrop. We're happy to have a new business and a new opportunity for our families. I am now on 11B. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2017-84 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointments by the mayor to the Bastrop Arts and Public Places, and Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation is required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter, as outlined in Exhibit A, and establishing an effective date. Colin, how hard is it going to be to see my PowerPoint? So, are you going to put it on the TV?
Good answer.
Are you going to run it from back there?
It's only like four slides. I think you can stand there and do it if you don't mind, or give me a clicker. If I need to run down there, I can. Is that going to be easy?
Just put the mouse up here, and I'll do it.
Like, you're lucky I can see the TV screen. It's going to say Mayor's. Do you make it? It's the PowerPoint slide right above where you are. It's not a PDA. There you go. That's it. Nope, that's not it. It looks like that. Can you read that writing underneath? Can I just do it off my Dropbox?
Absolutely.
All right. Um, hang on.
It should be?
It's not.
It is.
It is?
It's in.
Oh, I'm on the wrong agenda. There we go.
Should we staff a full resolution here?
There we go. All right. So, if you're like me and trying to follow along at home, we're on page 85. So, I am proposing Andrea Hashkey. I think I've said her name correctly. She was recommended by the BAIPP Board on October 4, and she will be filling a position that was vacated, so her term would end in 2018. And the other appointment that I'm making is Tabitha, help me out, Councilmember Nelson, Puchik?
Puchik.
Puchik. And she is a resident of Hunter's Crossing, has some kids, extremely interested in serving in the community, and she would be taking a new full term, so she would be, it would be a three-year term for her. Her term would end in 2020. For those of you interested in the appointment statistics, if these two appointments are approved, I will be at 44 appointments since June. 62% of the 44 people have not previously served on a board. 40% live in the downtown area. 42% of them live within the city limits, but not in the downtown area, and 18% of them live in the ETJ or outside the city limits. 44% of them are male, and 56% of them are female. I am respectfully asking that Council approve my appointments.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that Council approve your appointments. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Schiff. I will let you know, I will bring you up to speed that I was, thought I was going to be able to say tonight that all of the boards were full, and I only had some alternates to fill, but I received a resignation from the Parks Board today. So, I'm looking for a person for the Parks Board. Let me know if you are interested in serving on the Parks Board. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Council. I appreciate that very much. We're now on item 11C. Consider action to approve resolution 2017-85 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a license and service agreement between the City of Bastrop, Texas, and Tyler Technologies for the purpose of providing in-code public safety application and system software, including computer-aided dispatch and records management system, and municipal court application and system software, in the amount of $219,299, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the agreement, establishing a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Hello, Chief.
Thank you. What this is, this is a resolution that authorizes the city manager to execute a contract for our records management system and the CAD system. This is a budgeted item. It was discussed at length. If y'all have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. But the main thing I want y'all to understand is it is a budgeted item, but it's to a degree that the city manager felt like we needed to come to y'all to get y'all's approval for this.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Peterson. I have a second from Councilmember Jones. I want the citizens to know that we don't spend $219,000 without putting some thought into it. National Night Out, you've heard several of us speak about that. The officer that I was driving with is extremely anxious to have the system up and run. The officer that I was driving with is extremely anxious to have the system up and running. I know that it will help the people that we have become much more effective. Councilmember Nelson, were you wanting to say something? I think we've all heard a lot of great things about the system, and we're very excited to have it. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to say that I'm aware that all the members of this council are very, I hate to say, supportive, but we're very, public safety is very important to us, and this is going to take us in a long way to helping our public servants do their job and keep our citizens safe. And I think we're all on board for it, hopefully.
Thank you.
Fantastic. No further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. It is now 7:42, and we will be going into executive session for item 12A. City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to discuss purchase of four pieces of property in and around the downtown area. We are now in executive session.
I don't have to wait on builders.
Okay, we've got a quorum. We're returned back in session. It is 8:34. We are out of executive session. We will be taking no action. I'm at item 14.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Jones, and we are adjourned at 8:35. Thank you.